We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, including Wayne Hiller.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A memorandum from Mayor Page G. Cognetti dated September 5, 2023 regarding city updates. 3B, Scranton citizens' guide to storm water management from city of Scranton officials. 3C, single tax office city funds distributed comparison reports, 2022, 2023, year-to-date, September 7, 2023.
Are there any comments on any third order items? If not, receive and file. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a couple. So, I had announced these last week, but I was going to mention them again this week. Coming up this Saturday, September 16, is going to be the welcoming Scranton event over in Southside where they have the farmer's market, and that's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., so you can make sure to stop over there. They'll have food, music, vendors, and that's a great event, their 7th annual one. And then, another great event will be the West Scranton Fall Festival. They're going to have activities throughout the day, and that's starting at 11:00 a.m., and that's going to be starting over at Cloverfield, and so that'll be another great thing this weekend coming up. And towards the end of the month, Scranton Fringe Festival is going to be starting, so they're usually a little bit earlier in September, but this year they're starting September 28, and that'll be running through October 7, so make sure to check out Scranton Fringe Festival's website. You could find plenty of shows and events that will be going on throughout that period of time, and it's a really, it's a really fun time within the city to be able to go to, you know, to be supporter of performing arts. So, the last thing I was going to mention is this weekend is Rosh Hashanah, so I wanted to wish those who celebrate happy Rosh Hashanah. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't, I don't have any announcements. I just want to express how sad and how, how I feel with the horrific storm event that impacted all of Scranton. I mean, there are residents, God love them, with their houses underwater. There is residents who are going to lose their home. This devastation, I've, I've never seen at this level in these areas in my 61 years living in Scranton. So, my heart and, and support and prayers go out to these families. I hope we can do and make them whole again and prevent this horrific or a storm like this ever happening again in our city. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. I'll echo those sentiments, as well as the fact that someone lost their life in Clark Summit, South Abington Township, as a result of this storm, storm event. It's unbelievable, the amount of rain that came down in literally an hour, hour and a half, two hours, the likes, you know, you don't often see in a lifetime, and the devastation that resulted from it. Quite frankly, we're, we're fortunate that only one life was lost. I know a number of people had to be saved with the, with the torrential downpours and the storm water that raged from the Abingtons right down and through North Scranton and West Scranton, so hopefully we can do our best to try to help those people out that were most affected, and believe me, our thoughts and prayers are with all of them, and that's all I have.
I apologize. I also wanted to mention that in, in my remarks and announcements from earlier, but I also feel, feel terrible for the families in Scranton and Clark Summit, our area, who suffered during that storm and continue to deal with the after-effects of it, and I just really wanted to thank our emergency services and our DPW and code enforcement and all of our departments with the city for coming together to try to, to mitigate the problems from that, and they're going to continue to work to, to help those families and those who had lost, lost their, their homes, and so I was happy to hear the, the update that we received earlier, and I'll continue to be thinking about those, those families as well.
I guess I'll, I'll add it now. I was going to save it for Fifth Order, but I echo all my, my other council members' sentiments. I am a resident of Kaiser Valley. Within five minutes of this storm, I was bailing out my own basement and then moving towards pumping out others' basements, pumping out pools and making my way down, and those are only minor issues that occurred that night. It doesn't compare to the things that happened down in, in the lower, lower portions of Mary, around Maryfield and in North Scranton. Some of those people have lost everything from multiple vehicles and the entire contents of their home, so I'll echo those sentiments. I'd like to, you know, help in any way I can. I've, I've tried since I started on council with Kaiser Valley, with that pump house and with the areas that I've noticed for years have been issues. I brought that to, to some attention, and I'd like to see these issues cleared up. I know in the capital budget and with our ARPA funds, we are looking at Kaiser Valley. In this case, it didn't come soon enough. In caucus tonight, we discussed, I know I brought it up, I, we'll see where the administration has, is with it, but we've done working groups for much, for a lot of things around the city, and I know the residents of Kaiser Valley are looking to see, you know, they're, they're looking for help, you know, they don't, I think we could work with these residents down here to go through condemnation. I don't, I don't know where we're at with that, but it's not something I think that's going to help them at this point in time, and I think an open discussion with them, since there, there isn't, I mean, there's not a lot, we're not talking about several hundred people here. It's a small group that's been affected there and in North Scranton, and I think it's, it's feasible to get them together and talk about and see what it is that they actually need before we move forward, so I'd like to see that working group, that task force, whatever we'd like to call it, to, to get with those neighbors and actually have the neighbors join in with the, with the efforts. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I, I've worked in flooded areas before. You feel terrible, terrible for these people. You don't know what it is until you've actually been involved in one. Fortunately, I have not. I've been in the plot many a times after floods and stuff, but this one, this one, the destruction from, from the amount of actually earth that moved, it was unbelievable when we went out and looked at it and, and start seeing how much destruction actually was done by this between the bridges and, and rivers out of the banks and just, just making new rivers down the side of West Mountain. It was just unbelievable, and we just pray for the, for the people that were damaged in this.
Thank you. Fourth Order, citizen participation. Joan Hodawannas?
I too would like to compliment the efforts of our city workers, public works, fire and police. I watched the news on this event over the last few days, and we could be very proud of the efforts they put forth to mitigate this disaster. Without their help, it would have been far worse, which brings two issues to mind. One, the three taxing authorities we have, the city, the school district, and the county, is it possible for people who suffer significant financial loss, whether it's condemnation or major loss, that they could get some kind of relief on their property taxes for this year? Is that a question that can be asked? I don't know if it's doable, but it would be a, a help to them, you know, to be paying 100% of your assessed tax bill when you've got to shell out major money for major repairs or your house is condemned. It just doesn't seem the right thing to do. The second thing is, this should emphasize to all of you the importance of getting moving on storm water management. Come December 16, it will be seven years since the city sold the sewer authority and became responsible for storm water management. Seven years is a long time for this issue to drag out, and we need to get moving on it. You know, I mean, who's to say there won't be another storm this year or next year? So, you know, you have your marching orders. With regard to the city's website, the firefighter's arbitration award is dated April 4. That's 161 days ago. When are we going to see the firefighter's new contract on the city's website? And I remember you mentioned 120 days to dot the i's and cross the t's between all the lawyers. It's 161 days. That document should be available for public review. The Pocket Park, is there a projected completion date on that?
I'll address that in Fifth Order. In Fifth Order, I'll address that.
Okay, thank you. And the audit, is that still on track?
As far as we know.
Okay, you've got 18 days to go. Do we have any information on the MMO? We usually have it by late August, early September for the upcoming budget, MMO figures?
Not at this time.
Okay. And on the capital budget, Mr. Schuster, the question I asked you last week, the, is 7i the same as the item on page 13 of the capital budget, the pedestrian and traffic safety initiatives on Lackawanna and Mifflin Avenues, or are those two separate initiatives?
So, it's two, that was the question I had asked to Ms. Cipriani tonight. She actually said it was three separate initiatives.
Okay, so these two are separate?
They are separate.
So, basically, we're looking upwards to close to $4 million for pedestrian safety on those, those streets. Okay, I hope we get it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan Hodawannas. Les Spindler?
Meeting of Council, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. My, I too send my best wishes out to everybody that suffered from that storm. Hope they get all the help from the city, state, and whoever else they can get to help them out with the damage they had, because it was just awful. But, God knows, I live in Tripp Park, thank God there was no damage here that I know of. Councilman Schuster, you shouldn't have left.
Well, I did travel from Kaiser Valley down to Tripp Park to get a pump and then return. But, Tripp Park did look fine that night. There was a Arizona Kaiser Valley.
Don't want to blow my horn, but for years I was calling for storm drains on Dorothy Street where the baseball fields are and the, and the basketball court and tennis courts. On the side of the tennis courts, they put one in about a year or two ago, and just a few weeks ago, they just finished the job. They put two on the ball field side, and if that wasn't done, I think those fields would have been underwater, because under a normal rainfall, the water collected like almost out to the middle of the road, and the way it came down Saturday, I know those ball fields probably would have been flooded, so I thank God for Pennsylvania American Water and DPW. They both did their job together, so they, they finally finished, and not a speck of water on the street like day after the storm. So, those storm drains did their job. Next thing, I watched a meeting last week, and those people who are here to live on the 1800 block of Ferdinand Avenue, I can't believe what they have to put up with. I saw that picture on TV, and it doesn't look like a street, it just looks like a washed-out dirt road. If I was those people, I would, when it came tax time, I'd put my taxes in this, like an escrow account and not pay it till that street was fixed, because they paid their taxes and they have to put up with conditions like that? That's outrageous. I've never seen a street look so bad in my life. It looked like something out of a war zone. It's, it's just ridiculous. If I was them, I'd be here every, I'd be screaming. I'd be here every week till that was fixed. So, my heart goes out to them. I hope it's taken care of quickly. The next thing, I noticed this.
Mr. Spindler, I will address that in Fifth Order as well. I was up there yesterday.
Oh, okay. I, I won't be here. Last month, early, in August, maybe late in July, I noticed the splash pad in Novembreno complex wasn't working. There's wooden horses on one section of it, and I'm wondering why. I heard the splash pad at McDade Park was down for a while because something happened to a motor, but I didn't hear anything about the splash pad in Novembreno, and that was during the, you know, hot, some hot August days, and it wasn't working. So, maybe if we could look into that, see what the problem was? I mean, the swimming season's over, but, so I'd like to know what happened. That's only like two years old.
I, I do think there's damage to the surface. I didn't get that officially, but I believe there's damage to the splash pad surface.
Also, in the same area that the new playground they put in, I noticed, it looks like it's all done except for underneath the playground, and it's just stones underneath there. I'm hoping it's not going to be left like that. I mean, the kids have to play, are they, are they going to fall on stones, or are they waiting for another surface to put up on top of those stones? I don't know, but if we could ask about that, like, usually like in a Tripp Park playground, there's mulch underneath everything.
There are, there are, the rubber surfaces are going to be installed in both that park and also in Connell's, or Connor's Park.
Okay, thank you. Oh, next, last thing. When they were finishing up the storm drain job on Dorothy Street, I bumped into the DPW supervisor, who said my corner would be fixed. And anyway, I told him that, I was told that North Rebecca's on the paving list, and I said, when they put it in the paper, it wasn't in the paper, and he told me there's a fall in spring paving list. I have no idea about that, so I guess that means I'll be on the spring list, so I have to go all winter without a curb again? I've been talking about this for years, and it, it just never seems to get resolved, so I guess I have to wait another six months. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Virgil Argenta?
Regarding the Kaiser Valley flooding the night of September 9, 2023, could it have been prevented? The residents of this area deserve better. One of the biggest concerns from residents was the no-show of the Scranton mayor until nearly 24 hours later. The only elected official that was there earlier that morning was Councilman Mark McAndrew. If Councilman Tom Schuster was not dealing with his own water issues, I'm sure he would have been there too. The fire chief was there doing water rescues. We're grateful and thankful for that. I'm not here to kiss anybody's ring tonight. We elected a mayor to run the city. I'm sorry if she never won homecoming queen or prom queen. We elected, what she did win here was, we elected her mayor. We gave her the privilege to serve and make our city better. We are still waiting for that. After talking with the residents of the affected area, the biggest fears are having their homes condemned. They seem to give some city department heads excitement and glory when they condemn a home. These citizens understand their homes are damaged and in need of repair. It should be all hands on deck now, providing a loader, a dump truck, a pack master, and removing all damage debris from the front of the homes. We all know, once a city condemns a home, the nightmare begins. It is like taking a cheap shot at somebody when they're already down. Lately, that seems to be the new Scranton style. What we should be doing now is upgrading the pump house to a bigger computerized pump system. If you notice, the Kaiser Valley pump station was underwater. Is it sufficient to handle the amount of water in that area now with all the new development on the mountain? Was there a malfunction with the pump? Was it, was it turned on? Was it out of service? Is there a warning system that works? Are there bells, whistles, or sirens that activate? If so, were they working? The neighbors that I spoke to, nobody heard any warnings. Is the drainage and piping in that area sufficient? Are there storm drains there that are blocked or cut off? Were the issues that resident Lenny Cerebo presented over the years ever addressed? He has been asking for help. He's been asking for help with this issue for years. Neighbors also reported that they, no warning signals came from the pump house. Sure, we all know, the storm moved in quick, the water was fast. Okay, we get it. What wasn't fast was the response of the DPW. If anyone listened to the 911 calls that night, they had a difficult time reaching anyone from DPW. Just to set the record straight, no one's blaming DPW. They can only do what they're told and allowed to do by the administration. Do you know if we still have the 24/7 emergency call-out crew that we can call out and utilize during incidents, Mr. Smurl? We had an operations manager, an emergency coordinator. Has that job ever been filled since the person was relieved of his duties, Mr. Smurl? If that job was filled, could it have made a difference and the outcome been different, Mr. Smurl? You're in charge of DPW, correct? Is there a pump over on Market Street and Yard Avenue? Mr. Smurl? If so, was it turned on? Did the city ever fix what they started over there years ago? Does anybody know how to turn on that pump or where it's even located, at Market and Why were the great people in the affected area put in a school gymnasium? There wasn't a great amount of Tuga homes or families that were affected. Why weren't they offered hotel rooms? Were they not worthy of hotel rooms? But you'll give vouchers to the homeless to use Western Field. Does anybody not see the disconnect in the city right now? Mayor, you and your deputy mayor just proved to the citizens of Scranton how crucial living in the city you represent is when you must respond to emergencies. People want to hear from the elected leader. We didn't vote for chiefs, we didn't vote for directors to represent us. We voted for her, the mayor. If the job is beneath her or too much for her, then have her resign. We deserve much better representation than what we're getting. On another issue concerning, concerning the flood, I'll tell you something else that was bizarre and troubling. There was a Facebook blast that went out. Not a mention of a tragedy, but what it did mention, it mentioned that there was a council person's birthday, and if you'd like to do anything for this person, it says you can donate to my reelection campaign. Really? Who does that during such a terrible time in the city? The same council person, after someone else said about the flood, had to interact and say that she was sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Argenta.
Thank you for your time.
Norma Jeffries?
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And, you know, there's one thing that's good about America, that we have difference of opinions about things. I'm here to stand to say that over the summer, I looked up a lot of things in the charter, our homeroom charter, because there's things I don't understand about what's going on in city council. One of the things was when we have public caucus, and first of all, you can't hear completely what's going on in the public caucus, and to me, it seems like we should be able to send questions in prior to a public caucus so that our questions can be addressed by the individuals that are sitting and having the caucus. I know that a caucus is a, a political gathering of information and to provide information to the public, but if we, the public, don't have a chance to ask our questions, I'm not sure what, why we break our neck to come to a public caucus. It is advertised that you're having a public caucus, but if we can't ask questions, you know, I don't understand what a public caucus, how that's going to benefit me. I do appreciate the mayor and business representative of Cipriani being down here tonight. I was just very pleased with the information that they provided. I have a very dear friend that lives on Merrifield Avenue, and she called me and said, Norma, are you okay over there? I said, yeah, I'm fine, I'm watching a football game, and here she was waiting for the police and the firemen to take her out. Her picture's on the first, front page of the paper. I told her she made the paper, but not that she wanted that way, so she's very nervous about this whole situation, so I was taking as many notes as I can to tell her about what the mayor said. I was very pleased that the mayor was right on top of the situation over there at, at that part of the city, and like I said, it's here in America, we do have the opportunity to dispute other things that people are saying, so the speaker before me, you know, I'm not sure what he expected the mayor to do, to get a boat and come over there herself, but a lot can be done in, in the, on the telephones, and I'm sure that they were buzzing with trying to get people and to get help. So, I do have to say that as far as the mayor was sitting there and as to why that she was elected to do her job, and she's doing that job. I was not here last week as well, and it's just different listening to it at home versus being here, but when each of us stand here with different things that are on our hearts, different things that are bothering us. With Joan, it's the audit. With Marie, it's been the storm water treatment, and with me, it's been the street signs. So, last week, when there was an article in the paper with the person that took the time to write to the paper about his concern about the street signs, I had received information over the summer that it was an issue with the equipment to put up the street signs and that a bid was going to be going out for that equipment, so I'm hoping that that will happen, and it won't be long. It's been six years that I've been talking about street signs, so six years. Each time I have a birthday, I get older and older and older, so six more years before the street sign goes up, I'm not sure I'll be standing here, but I just hope and pray that, that on the capital budget going up for next year, that it will include something and some line item so that the equipment can be bought and, and that it can be, excuse me, functional for next year. I've seen, that's another thing, when they talked about the budget tonight, how many of our residents out there know or can see anything about the budget? And we talk very freely about the internet. Everybody doesn't have internet. Everybody doesn't have the access to a computer, so whenever I can, I'm speaking for those that don't have that kind of a voice, and my paper is filled tonight with different notes I took as the mayor was speaking. I will type them up, and I will talk to my friend over on Merrifield Avenue, and just to give her some kind of hope. And one other final thing I want to say is that at Naug Park, they are collecting, it was Tuesday night, it was tonight, and it'll be next Tuesday night, from 5:30, I think, until 6:30 or 7:00. So, one of the things that I thought was interesting on the list, along with the cleaning supplies, was quarters, and I thought, quarters? And then it dawned on me, they probably have to go to a laundromat. So, you know, take, think about the people that are out there. If you see them collecting someplace, you know, it's easy to be in our own little world, but try to think about those people and, that are out there that have been affected by this water, because like me, I was sitting, watching a football game while others were in a very bad state of affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries, and I will address in Fifth Order about the caucuses in terms of microphones. We're looking into that, and also the street signs. I know the mayor mentioned it during caucus, but I'll give a little bit of an update on that. Ron Elman?
Good evening, council. First off, I'd like to say Rosie Mae went down to the festival. Even though I dropped a couple twenties, I was just, couldn't be more enthusiastic. It was just terrific. And I think it was well-planned. I seen bathrooms. That's a necessity when you're 86 years old now. Anyway, we need more like that. Like I said, I found shade to sit down in. I just couldn't find nothing adverse to say about the whole situation. It was terrific. Now, about six houses down the street from me is where the flood started, in front of the DuPaul. Those poor houses, this is my neighborhood, I know all these people. Some are retired, some are both husband and wife working for their property mostly. Everybody's basement's flooded. Washing machines are out there, and heating systems were lost, water tanks. I talked to three or four, they just don't know their next move, you know? The next move is going to have to be some sort of loan, I suppose. That's, it's just, it's bad over there for probably more than a dozen houses. Two of the occupied houses were condemned, they were just, there's just no saving them. Then you start thinking, the tax losses, everybody seems to want around here, the hospitals want, the city wants, the county, the state, the school board, the colleges. I don't know where, Gerald Cross said years ago, the worth of this city's dropped millions. This reassessment is nothing but the big life. I've been saying it for two or three years. Now, you people realize that some of us got to have some help here when the reassessment comes. Reassessment is to raise taxes. It failed down in Wilkes-Barre, and now it's just a burden that everybody keeps creeping up in conversations. You know, you think I jumped up and down about the $240,000 walkability plan. Here in August, our code enforcement lost five suits, five suits for $1,300,000. This is the same people that harassed me right up to today. They just don't seem to learn, I don't know. You know, you, two or three months ago, you were, you said how many apartments they came across. They didn't talk to a single person on North Main Avenue where there's a dozen illegal houses. There's so many illegals on North Main Avenue, they park on the sidewalk. Every single house on the 2,000 block has a garage and a driveway. They're just full of people. I don't know what to do with them all. The zoning board keeps giving variances, and there's no place to park. This whole city needs, it needs a mayor desperately, like we just heard. This woman doesn't have the ability to govern. It's sad, I'm not mad at her or nothing, but she's not mayor material. And we don't need any to keep buying, we need some taxable property. We don't need that building next door and worry about the long term. Look what's here right now. We are not in good shape right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Hi, I'm Taylor Sokil. I'm a resident in the Hill section and a homeowner. So I wasn't going to say anything about it after the devastation from the storm, but today, a child in front of my house fell off his bike, and we have a sewer grate that was broken. It got ran over by one of the DPW trucks during the Hill section, you know, when they repaved the streets and everything. But they fixed it, but there's a gap about this large, and you can see the old brick. And today, he fell, and I sit by Farber Court on Olive Street, down from the Fireman's Hill, where they like to ride their bikes and stuff. So when he fell, I can't think of like all the other children in our neighborhood. It just seems like a really bad thing for not only just, obviously, the kids, but the city. It seems like a liability to have that big of a gap.
Taylor, where is that Olive and where?
So you know, there's Irving, North Irving, Prescott, Farber Court, across from 1425 Olive Street, which is my house.
Harbor Court?
Yeah, across from 1425 Olive Street, my house, that like sewer grate. I have a picture on my phone, if I can bring it up, is that fine? But I don't have a printout. Can I show you? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Voldenberg, can we have DPW take a look at that on Olive and Harbor Court? It's, I guess, would be a manhole cover. Would that actually be, would that be the city or would that be the castle?
I'll reach out to DPW and the Water Company.
Yeah, and the Water Company, if you could.
I will, sir.
Have them take a look at that, because that doesn't look good. I mean, it looks like, honestly, if that kid fell, it looked like he could fall down in there, quite frankly.
It just seems like very scary. It wasn't, I don't know if I were to, if he was a right over there, I cleaned up the scratches of the kid, and I just felt like, he fell there, that's a whole other.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like that movie with the clown. It's not, it doesn't look good.
Yeah, if he wouldn't even have to reach through the grate, he could just have.
It's not good.
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. I would implore you to do everything you can with this flooding and try and give these people all the help they need. Probably won't be able to give them all the help they need, but as much as you can. And I have to go up that way tomorrow, so I might stop through the neighborhood just to see what's going on up there. Last week, I mentioned about $21 million losses in our pension for police and fire. And I would hope that that gets considered now. And I would hope that some of our new and old speakers here pick up on it and inform themselves. It was in the Times paper, you could get information from Brian Fulton in their archives, and it might cost you a coin, but not too many. And by the way, it lost $6 million, or no, it gained $6 million from last year, but I don't buy that. We're still $21 million down, and that should have earned a couple of million. So I see some issues in the paper with restoring or rebuilding the swimming pool at Weston. And a few weeks ago, it was Mr. Bolus, he mentioned grout. And by the way, you would think that that might be a silly idea, but when they want to repair cracks in the Hoover Dam, with all of the billions of tons of water, millions of tons of water behind that, they inject grout into the cracks, and it holds that water back instead of having it progress. And now getting to the water bill situation. It's a prime example of basically a con job by everybody. Henry Amoroso was brought into town by the colleges, and it was supposed to be some kind of solution. And we were made promises that the payments wouldn't be, excuse me, jacked up. And they just consistently got jacked up. And as far as I'm concerned, PA American Water is not living up to the promise. And I think we should start a counter-suit on some of this, because I don't need to be paying for people outside of Scranton for sewer authorities and such, and then turn around and have the Department of Consumer Affairs say, "No, you can't do that. You can't charge other people." I was against it. I was at the original meeting when that proposal, it was probably 10 years ago, was put forth. And now moving along, after the Italian Fest, I was walking up Linden Street and Jefferson Avenue. And it was a four-way stop, no turn on red. Just about the time the parking light, or the walk sign came on, somebody pulled off in front of me. And it's no secret, I am totally against that walkability plan. And furthermore, they have a bike trail listed down on Mattis Avenue, which winds around the old Chamberlain General Dynamics. And several years ago, the city took parking meters from up by the hospital and put them down there because they had their garage in repair. And the guys came in and, "Hey, we're a big corporation here, we have nowhere to park, and we can't have people running out every two hours to fill the meter with coins." Now, they're putting in a quarter of a billion dollars, probably to help with Ukraine and different situations. We're falling way behind on our national security problems with the Department of Defense. And that being said, they're talking about 40 more employees within a year or two. And by the way, you have to go through a security check before you walk in the door. So how could you run out and park in meters or park six blocks down the street? You're just plaguing somebody else then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
And have a good night.
Had that exhaust the sign-in list, or anyone else like to be heard?
Members of council, Tom Coyne, Manuka. First, I'd like to note the passing of Robert Kazi Cosmark, a good friend of mine and a friend of my brother's from Manuka. He also, at one point, lived in Westside. He passed away this Friday. Second, on the pickleball request, I can't see any possible justification in rating Workman's Compensation Fund for any project. Retirement, Workman's Comp and Obligations are not a rainy day fund for the city. Who thinks stealing $500,000 for Workman's, for the pickleball from Workman's Comp is a good idea? And last, faster than a rising flood, Mayor Cognetti was out to the cameras, saying how horrible the flooding is and millions of damage. And in case there's more rain, you should stay put as we are ready to watch you get flooded again. Last week, we had people who commented on Leggitts Creek. They related to us experiences of being dodged about FEMA and studies and grants and dates promised that are already passed. All sorts of dismissive actions. It's not new. The city has been not working on it since 1985 and Hurricane Gloria. The community suffered millions of dollars' worth of damage, and the mayor was quick to remind people, they can look to the Red Cross for help. We have updated flood maps, water runoff issues, faulty undersized pipes, and a failure to dredge. We've had a flood of federal money that is going to everywhere, but we, but where we know the community truly needs it. Choose walkability and leave the citizens in danger. Thank goodness for the people of Leggitts Creek will have a $1 million pickleball court. Antique lighting around City Hall and the courthouse is definitely a bigger priority. Maybe the flooded residents can go to Cooper's, to the new bar that was rapidly funded, and drink their sorrows away. How could we have seen this coming? I ask that of myself almost every week, as do the people here in City Council. Maybe the people who are suffering can come to City Hall for help. No, they can't, because the doors are locked. The mayor does not want people contacting her or her people. They should contact 311 and wait. I believe the government thinks direct interaction with the public is a danger. And from recent classified non-public reports paid for by the people of this city, it all starts with those pesky veterans. Now, I know that fourth order and citizens' participation is a bother. It would be so much smoother if we did not have the people involved. But citizens' participation comes from a right. The First Amendment is often quoted for free speech. But this forum is the right to redress our government. The mayor dislikes people's rights of people who question. We have a government behind a blockade who will avoid the First Amendment, who locks people out of the People's Building and who yells at them. We will tell you how you can express your rights. Let us ask questions to, let us pre-ask questions to the mayor so the answers can be provided or dodging of the topic can be pre-planned. Impromptu questions sometimes get truthful answers, and we can't have that. And on the act of hiring a company to make a list of potential people of danger, we have seen it with Charlie Chaplin and the Red Scare and the Hollywood Blacklists. We've seen it with 20,000 people on Edgar Hoover's Subversive List. We have seen it in 1940 in Germany. We have seen it as infants who are currently on the no-fly list. How have we allowed ourselves to go from a government who is there to protect the people, now to a government who seeks to be protected from the people? I don't quite get that. And the last statement on the flooding, it was said, "How can we, how can we deal with the pump house being flooded? What can we do to do that?" Maybe learn a page from Fukushima. When their generators and pumps got flooded, you don't build pumps for floods at ground level, you elevate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne.
Good evening, council. Lenny Cerebo, flood victim. Oh, you probably knew I was coming. Okay, this is all about, I get to say, I got five minutes to say what I feel, and if you don't like it, too bad. You know, I think that was pretty slick for the mayor to call an emergency meeting that I only heard, "Well, I came in a little bit late, but I didn't know anything was coming." I only heard, well, I came in a little bit late, but I, I didn't know anything was coming about the flooding there. I live right at the corner of Lafayette and North Maryfield. So I, I'm there firsthand. You know, and the mayor, boy, this is really something. I was interviewed by Channel 28 the day after the flood and they even told me what time I'm going to be on and, and a caption about it. And geez, they didn't show it, but they showed the mayor telling us, you know, if you see water, don't go in it. Thanks a lot, mayor. Duh. You know, now why didn't she say at that time, I'm going to have a special meeting on, on the flooding here? But not, I didn't learn anything about this. You know, I even come to, when I come to meetings, I come here early. Quarter after I walked in, she was done talking about the flooding, you know? And then she rambled on and on about all the other crap that, you know, justice isn't as important, as, you know, the citizens there, the neighbors. You know what? The pictures and the TV doesn't do it justice. You know, go there yourself and see how it is. You know, I asked a bunch of neighbors to come to the meeting. Once again, you're wasting your time, Len, and we're too busy cleaning up. You know, all I know, now, I don't know everything, but people have had to call dumpsters themselves. I don't, I didn't see any being delivered by the city, so, you know, what are the people supposed to do? You know, wait to clean out their place if the city sends dumpsters? You know, everybody, we need help out there. You know, that's what I said at the interview and then I was surprised I wasn't on, you know? But I learned not to drive in the water from her. You know, even from past experience, I've been coming here for 10 years, you know, and I know there was other places that got it bad. But I believe we wouldn't have had the flooding problem if council listened, not just to me, but other people have tried talking about, you know, the drainage system is just totally wrong. Also, the mayor, when she was talking about the pump house, I just caught the end of it and she was saying, you know, like how she gets her information. Why don't you ask me? You know, that pump house, that's right, who the, who the heck's engineered that place that when it fills up with water, it kicks the breaker right there? I agree with Tom. It needs to be up higher. And that's what happened years ago, a couple of times. In some bad flooding, it fills up and it kicks the breaker. Duh. Jeez, I wonder how to fix that. You know, I even feel that this is a big thing right now. But you know what? After it blows over, my experience in the past for 10 years, yeah, we're taking care of it. I heard every, every story in the, in the book or every excuse. What they're doing, we're looking into it. We sent engineers. It's even now, a couple of years ago, they said, all right, it's in the budget, but it's too late in the season. Soon as the spring comes around, you know, we're going to start fixing the problem. That was three or four years ago. Never saw that. You know what? I have no faith, no faith in mayor, no, in the city. It's really sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Srebro. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
I'm Marie Schumacher, city resident and taxpayer. I must admit, I'm a little bit in shock today. I just heard about my neighbor, Wayne Hiller and a few other things that I've heard here tonight that makes it hard to get back on these items. But I do want to say thank you for two things. Number one, last week, I talked about the, the big hole that, and, and it was, it was still there when I went home last night, or that night, but the next morning, when I went down 307, it was filled in. Now, I don't know if it was DPW or the owner of the property or who did it, but I want to thank whoever did it because that was, that was very good feeling to know nobody was going to get hammered by that. And the other is just for the, the DPW and the, well, and the police and firemen that have been out working on this storm. Really appreciate them and hope they get some, are able to get some rest. And then I also wanted to, when I came in tonight, there was this thing downstairs, a flyer about tick check and underlying tick bites and Lyme disease. Lyme disease is terrible, but I do want to share with everybody. I think I've done it before and I think the county has done it. East Stroudsburg University has a lab, a tick lab there. And they are excellent and if you can pull the tick out and send it to them, they will tell you what you need to do or not, or you can relax and not do. So please do that if you need to. Now on the, the, what is going on with the tax-exempt properties? We were going to do a, a study of some kind. I think there was an RFP in twice. I don't know if anybody even bid on it, but is that progressing and is it underway or what is the status at this point?
I know they put it back out for bid again. I'll have to check on the status of whether people have bid on that. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. And on the, on seven I, I know you're going to be voting on it tonight, but I wish you would not vote until we actually see a split about how those, all those things are going to be funded. You know, it's just too easy to get them in the wrong place and make it look pretty down there on Lackawanna Avenue instead of doing what needs to be done. And Sorento, are we going to get a study on that? I asked about what's going on there, profit and loss about Sorento. Are we going to get anything? And then what are we going to do with that, well, Engine 15 home there on, I guess it's Ash Street in Petersburg? I don't think it goes out, does it? Does anybody know if it goes out? Is there smell? But, you know, I, why does it sit there? I, I just don't know. I thought that was going to be closed off.
We'll check on that status for you.
Pardon? Oh, yeah.
We'll check on that status.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what happened. If it still goes out, I can't, I have a hard time believing that it goes out, but maybe it does.
The fire station, Engine 15? Yeah, Engine 15, there is no engine in there? The, the police department uses that for storage.
Well, there's still an engine in there.
Up at Prescott Corners? Well, they did, they put a new engine in it. There wasn't, there, I know the fire department, the police department was using the upstairs for storage and we did have an office up there at one point, but I don't know if it's still there.
Okay. I just, you know, wondered if it's, if we still need to have that property either. And, and on tonight, you know, tonight, and Lenny was just talking about coming in and hearing the mayor and Ms. Zepriani doing, talking about the stormwater, which of course was, you know, I guess unavoidable. But yet when a caucus is announced for one thing, it should be held to that one thing. And, you know, maybe announce one after the meeting instead of it before the meeting so people who are interested in, in the stormwater, as Lenny would have been and a lot of other people, I'm sure that would have helped.
Yeah, we had her scheduled to come in on the Capitol Budget and we thought, just because of the emergency that occurred over the weekend, we thought it'd be a good idea to have her update as to what is going on with the city.
Yeah, it's understandable. It just would have been nice if it would have kept it when, you know, the beginning of this meeting and even put it in there so people could have known. But thank you. I lost my time.
Delmar Zavitch, Scranton City Taxpayer. I think it's a good time to start taking into consideration the increase in extreme weather events in the area and in the world at large. Now, I don't speak on this too frivolously. Actually, on Saturday night, that marked the 12th anniversary of devastating flood that wiped out my own house 12 years ago, rendered me homeless, my family homeless for some time. And I am very aware of what it's like to lose everything to a flood, flood that by all accounts shouldn't have happened. And for other consideration, that's how easy it is to become homeless. So when we approach the homeless people in our community, think about it, one bad storm, one car accident, all it takes. But we as a city need to do what we can to prevent as much as we can aberrant weather and extreme weather conditions, which we all know are tied to climate change. And we're getting pretty close to the wire on that, where it's irreversible and this is just going to be the, the new normal. Now, obviously, the city of Scranton can't do that all by itself, but we can do our part to, to make a change in our own lifestyles and in our own city planning in order to reduce carbon emissions and reduce urban heat islands and the, the events of extreme heat coming from our cities. And part of that has to do with reducing our reliance on automobiles. Now, cars are a huge source of carbon emissions and I am close to the number one, but it is one thing that the city actually has some relative control over. And by boosting public transit, especially by transit that doesn't involve burning fossil fuels such as electric trains, we can really do a lot to help combat the effects of climate change in our own community. And reducing people's reliance on cars and promoting walkability also really reduces our rate of consumption on both material and on fuel. So this is a good time to start investing and sort of really taking some huge strides for walkability, for transit and increasing the public density, reducing our reliance on automotive. Because this is too expensive for us, both in terms of personal finance, city finance, and then when the storms hit and we lose everything. Most Americans can't afford even a $1,000 emergency. The millions of damage, hundreds of thousands sometimes for families who've lost their homes just on four or five people is untenable. And we can't keep experiencing this. So doing what we can to reduce our own contribution to climate change and also help to increase our community's ability to have something to save, to bounce back if things occur, if tragedy does strike, is what, what we need to be focusing on as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Delmar. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Hi, I'm Rick Little from Scranton. I'd like to talk about the criminalizing of the elderly here in Scranton mainly through judicial means, through the Scranton Housing Authority. Yesterday, there was a meeting. I had been to many meetings, tried to go to many meetings before and I go there and the door's locked, but for some reason, I was surprised. I was surprised to see the Times Tribune there and other people and we got into the meeting and they, you know, they make you sign a list and it was like they'd never seen anybody at their meeting before, which I believe probably is what, what the fact is. It, it's just that, I read in the paper today that the mayor, or, or, I'm reading the, the letter that Mayor Cognetti sent to them about a new SHA director. And, you know, she said, she says, "I was surprised to read in the Scranton Times Tribune that the search is already well underway to fill the anticipated vacancy in January." And I was also surprised that there's only three candidates. I mean, I know from living there for 14 years, 15 years, that this is a very closed little thing. It's the same people over and over for the past 28 years. And, you know, they, they do, oh, SHA was incorporated in 1939. Well, the fact of the matter is, it was, it was in business way before that. It just got incorporated in 1939. And, and as I've said before, there was a mayor of Scranton, Mayor Durkin, who, who was head of SHA from like 1926 until the mid 70s. It was, it was a good thing, but it's turned into this, this, this thing that just, if you, you don't, they put signs all over, all over the building, you do, you know, you're going to be evicted, you're going to be evicted. You don't, you know, put your garbage in bags, you're going to be evicted. You're got, you know, it, it's constant stress of eviction and I finally figured it out. It's because they got these prosecutors and the prosecutors are, I mean, they recently switched it to the white shoe law firm that's representing the school board now that I'm fighting, that they didn't even put their papers in today that like they were ordered to. But, you know, before that, it was David Coyne, evicted me twice in, in, in the magistrate court. And I'm looking at the board and I'm seeing that there's this guy on the SHA board who's a, who's also a magistrate judge. And they do it so fast. I mean, I, I tried to get out of the, I tried to move it to federal court, but it, it's, they didn't even ask me to see the lease, the lease that was, you know, approved in this body. All the papers, I mean, they have rules in the courts where, you know, if, if we don't have the court, the sightings in our law library, talking about the law library in the Lackawanna Court, that, that you have to provide them. Well, they don't have any of the CFR, federal things. And they have gathered together, almost every agency in the city, Department of Aging, the Lackawanna Probono, they got the police involved, the fire involved, and they are criminalizing the elderly. They don't have a chance. They go to court, they're taken to court. I said three words in the last time, you know, my last eviction, which I'm still dealing with, with court process, but it's, it's, it's the number one thing that's making people homeless. And I think the main, and now they want Carl Anott, who, who I learned last night, oh, he worked 14 years as the, the liaison for the District Attorney's Office for Housing. And he's the guy that hired David Coyne. And I've dealt with him a lot. It, it, there's, there's no honesty anywhere, anywhere going on. And, you know, how they know that police officers worked here, how the mayor knew, why don't I know? Why don't they have a list of the people that work at SHA? Why don't they have a list of the people that work at S H A? Because I've been just, they're dodging everything, you know, including discovery in court of who works there?
Thank you, Mr. Little. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Schmirtl, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, yes, I do. First one, Mr. Volenberg, I had sent to you pictures and a short address and stuff of 914 South 9th Avenue. They said it's behind a printing place on Main Avenue. Anyway, it's a small building owned by Verizon, and you can barely see it. I, I think they cut the front of it out so they can get it out of the door, but we send code enforcement up there and ask them to find out, maybe we can find out who actually owns it, I believe Verizon does, and maybe they can clean that up in the neighborhood.
I will, Mr. Schmirtl.
Thank you. And the second thing I have is, I was contacted Wednesday morning after last week's council meeting by some veterans, veterans concerned about this thing, this report from Muffelhun. This was an assessment done by the, the Trump administration through Homeland Security. This was a pilot study that Scranton was involved in, and Philadelphia, and, and other cities throughout the United States. The concern was the veterans, word veterans was in here four times, and they felt like they were being targeted. But, this pretty much means nothing. I don't think it's worth the paper it's printed on. It is not, though, something that we voted on for a, a project that the city sent an RFP out for. This, this request, a proposal was sent out by the city of Scranton. The RFP I have here, and the, exactly what I said before we went on break, it was about, it was about gangs. And if you read the Community Health and Safety Landscape Analysis, it says, "Scranton faces a combination of challenges and potential violence in the city. These include, but are not include, but are not limited to, gangs based outside the city also operate within the city, and increase migration, population from larger cities into our neighborhoods." This, this is what I voted for. This was the study that our police chief had asked support on, myself and, well, we, we went to speak to him the day bef, or the day of, council meeting, before we voted on this. We spent an hour and a half with, with our, our police chief, and went over this a lot, because there's a lot of things in there that, that, that can't help us, but there's a lot of stuff in there that, that's kind of unnecessary. But anyway, the RFP went out, and two proposals came in. One was for $99,675 from the Institute. The second proposal that came in was for $69,374 from Muffelhun. The city chose the cheaper one, and that is the one that I voted on approving, because our chief asked for support in this. I trust our chief, so that's why I supported it. But anyway, the, the concern with the veterans, so the following day, I had arranged a, a meeting with, with our chief and some of the concerned veterans. I met with Andy Chamco, Ed Chamco, Sam Kuchwar, Ed Davis, Kyle Donahue, and Chief Carroll to discuss all of these concerns about our veterans. That, that, that reporter, whatever that was done before, means absolutely nothing. My only concern was with what Chief Carroll had to ask for support on, which was this RFP. That's what we voted on. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmirtl. Mr. Schuster?
Yes, I have a few things. Didn't plan on talking about Muffelhun, but this, this pilot program was done in four cities. It was a grant for about $749,000, $750,000. What Mr. Schmirtl said, I, I wrote his words down, worth nothing. The report's worth nothing. And what's included in that report is absolutely unnecessary. When I first spoke about this report, those were two of the things that I feared. We were spending money on a study from when I researched this group, this group had nothing to do with crime, nothing to do with gangs. And my fear was that we were going to spend $70,000 on a study from a group that was unqualified to do this type of study. And my, my, I still stand that this group is unqualified to do a study that we were requesting this study for. It's worth nothing, and it's unnecessary. And what I planned on doing was getting a copy of that original study, so I could base my opinion on whether this group was worth investing in to do this study. I was denied that access to this study. It was passed, we spent the $70,000. After reading that study, it was worth nothing and unnecessary. Next, in the Capitol budget, we have four new electric vehicles that are being included for purchase. Mr. Volenberg, can we get a list, if you could reach out to the administration to get a list of who the individuals are that are driving these electric vehicles, and if we can get a list of other city vehicles and the drivers and who they're assigned to?
I will, sir.
Thank you very much. I did forget to mention, and I'm sorry for it, thanking the Scranton Police Department, Scranton Fire Department, and DPW. They did a lot of great work, which I witnessed firsthand, Frink Street, Kaiser Ave, North Scranton. Thank you very much for what you did that night. It was something that, once that storm started, I saw police officers in my neighborhood called into action and leaving their homes to get out on the roads that night, so thank We have a hearing coming up on the Capitol budget. Everybody here in attendance tonight got to hear part of that Capitol budget, and I hope anybody on TV that was listening, if there's any concerns with that Capitol budget, if you could please come in and, and, you know, give input onto that budget, whether we should move forward with it and what your thoughts are. I've asked for it before, Mr. Volenberg, I don't think we've ever officially got a copy of it. Can we please ask the administration for the Kaiser Valley Stormwater Study?
I will.
Thank you. I mentioned tonight a task force to be, and I, I don't, we could use any name that we want, a task force, a working group, anything like that, it came up in caucus. The neighbors in Kaiser Valley and parts that were affected in North Scranton would like input into what's going on, and I think our city could give them the benefit of doubt to, to get input on what help it is that they need. I can't say what help it is they need, because I'm not in their position, but I think they could give input into what help it is that they need to help them through this. I don't know if condemnation is the, the answer, but I do know that's something that they're, they're very concerned about. Ferdinand Street seems to have been paved, thank you for that. And I'm sure as I move to the next council person, there'll be some things that I forgot to say, but that's all for tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, I have several complaints, I'm just going to go ahead and forward along and email to Mr. Volenberg, but just one real quick, that if we could request from DPW, and this is at the, like at the top of the 400 block, in between the 400 and 500 block of Taylor Avenue and Vine, there is a one-way sign that someone has brilliantly turned around, so it looks like the one-way is, is actually the opposite way, so not to confuse drivers, if we could get that sign corrected.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you.
Is that it, Dr. Rothschild?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew?
Okay, I wasn't going to speak to Muffelhun tonight either, but I, I thought I put it to bed. Guess what? The first report's nothing, and the second $70,000 one's going to be a bunch of nothing too. All right? Secondly, during announcements, of course, I spoke to the poor residents and, and how bad I feel and how, and how I hope that we, we can help them as much as possible, as quickly as possibly. But, in fifth order, I want to say how proud I am of our Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works Department, with their immediate diligence helping all of our residents get through this horrific event. So this morning, I, I opened the paper, and I was, I was very disturbed, I was disappointed when I read the article about the Housing Authority meeting. And what concerned me was even the horrific event and the devastation that occurred since Saturday, the amount of involvement from the mayor and her administration with regards to the appointment process, with regards to the search, it should be expanded outside of the state, the civil, civil service component should be removed, the qualifications and job description should be altered. That disturbed me, because the mayor's authority is to appoint, that's it, that's it, to that board, nothing else. Not sending letters telling them how to operate, who to pick or how to pick, maybe not who to pick, but I, I didn't like it, because most of us remember, the last time a mayor tried to take over and actually controlled an authority, was the sewer authority. And look what happened there. It was sold, we're left holding the bag for storm water, and our water bills have been the highest that, that I can remember. So that concerned me, and it should all of you. And then, last but not least, Mrs. Hordowanis, I mean, I'm with you, chairman of Public Safety Committee, let's find out why, once and for all, why the firefighter's contract isn't on the website. We were told way before we went on recess that, yeah, I think it was 120 days max, they told us, and I know us well over that, and thank you, you're, you're keeping the counter going for us, but we need, we need an answer. And I don't want to hear it's because of Upberg and their legal department, we paid enough for, for that, okay? The contract's settled, I don't want to hear they have to go bit pieces through it and, and spend more money on it. So, please, we want to, we want to know exactly when, and, and by next week.
I'll follow up.
Thank you, and that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. I have several notes here. The mayor and city council will present a joint proclamation on Friday, September 15th, at 1:30 PM, for the city's Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation to community organizers at NEPA's Latino Festival. The event will take place at Scranton City Hall front steps. ECTV is contracting with Endeavor Incorporated to secure four microphones for the conference table out front here, so that all the citizens can hear, you know, our discussions during caucus, and so that you can hear when we have guests come in and present, to make it, you know, obviously better for citizens to be able to hear what's being discussed during caucus events. So, that was something that was bothering me as well, so I put this request in, and as recently as, as late last week, and I'm glad to see they're going to jump on it. The 1800 block of Ferdinand Street, which I visited yesterday, took a video, took some pictures, I also spoke to the, the daughter of one of the, who was actually a former student of mine, the daughter of the parents that lived up on Ferdinand Street, so I wanted to see it. As I was bouncing around to the different spots yesterday in North Scranton and West Scranton, reviewing some of the flood damage, I made sure I went up to Ferdinand Street to review what went on up there. So, council asked if this street is part of the FEMA 2018 project. Residents who visited here last week, you know, told us about the terrible conditions, and they were right, it's absolutely horrendous. It, it's terrible. It's presently under review by DPW, and, so FEMA damage contains three sites for repair, Ferdinand Street, remove and replace the surface, 900 CY asphalt roadway surface, 92 feet long by 5 feet wide, 6 inches in deep. This work is scheduled between today and Friday of this week, so hopefully, they're going to get some relief up there on Ferdinand Street. So, hopefully, I don't know if the neighbors up in Ferdinand Street are watching this evening, but help is on the way. And please, scream and yell if it doesn't happen by Friday. Joan Hordowanis, status of the union contracts on the city website. The city's waiting on a finalized version from the Labor Council and will post the same upon receipt. That's what I, answer I got on that one. Okay, item 5D and 5F donations to Scranton Fire Department. Scranton Fire Department donation account is 120-29-544-000000000. It's the same account, and they indicated that they can amend the Amos Tower legislation to make sure the title. There was a question last week, because it, it appeared as though there are two different accounts that they were going to go into, and I think it was, it's actually the same account. So it was just, yeah, so we got, we got an answer on that. Under 5L legislation with the Lackawanna Avenue wall repair, I think that was addressed, there are two different projects, and the funding's already in place for the wall repair that's awaiting PennDOT permit approval. So, that's a mess. It's, it's a terrible eyesore in our city, and I'm afraid that wall's going to come down on top of somebody. And, and it's right at the entrance to the city of Scranton, it's got to be repaired, and it appears as though it's well on its way, so let's hope that happens soon. Mrs. Schumacher mentioned that the St. Col on Route 307, Seymour Avenue, has been repaired. We're thrilled about that. Street sign program, please be advised, DPW has made 577 signs in-house as of September 7th, and has installed 400 of them. The administration plans on issuing an invitation to bid for installation of street name signs in West Side, as indicated earlier by the mayor. Lackawanna Avenue wall repair legislation, okay, we, I think we already addressed that. Marie Schumacher, Schumacher asks how much the improvements are for safety and how much is allotted toward beautification. This is a grant application, has not been awarded to date. The proposal calls for the additions of new curbs, paving, curb bump outs, ADA accessible ramps, signing and marking of bike lanes, and crossing at intersections create proven traffic calming measures. The project also implements a road diet for lessening the vehicle use of the road space for additional traffic calming measures. Further, the adding of better lighting and tree cover along the entire route not only improves visibility, but reduces the heat island effect, adding additional safety features for pedestrians and other users. That's the response I got on that. Doris Kolowski mentioned the handicap curb cart repair at Olive Street and Colfax Avenue, East Gibson Street and Colfax Avenue. We sent this to DPW for status on those repairs. Len Cherebro, Kaiser Creek flooding, Dewey Avenue, Lafayette Street, Senator requests the administration, as homeowner Len Cherebro asked council to reach out to the city administration to secure a copy of the approximate two-year-old study done by the city engineer regarding the flooding to his street and projected repairs. The response was, DPW has done a lot of work in this section, DPW employee has met with the resident, has pictures and a map of the potential issue. DPW has plans to camera the line this weekend to pinpoint the elbow that was installed without engineering approval. Once DPW can locate the position of the issue, DPW can recommend a permanent fix. DPW and engineer will need to determine whose property the elbow is located on and acquire the proper permits and engineering for the fix. Apparently, they, they also asked that the resident completed write-to-no request at their earliest convenience concerning this issue. Not me, the city. Kaiser Valley Stormwater Design. City plans to make improvements for stormwater infrastructure in Kaiser Valley area. The next phase of this project will add to the previous study of the area and begin design and engineering phases. The study will be used in the application for additional funding sources for 11 construction and implementations. The project cost is $467,000. City will use $421,000 of Pima Advanced Assistant Grant Funds, $46,000 of ARPA funds for the project. The estimated cost, the Kaiser Valley Stormwater Construction between 2024, that was the design, the construction is between 2024 and 2026. Estimated cost for construction phase is $9,600,000. City plans to use $4,000,000. City plans to use $4,800,000 of H2O grant funds and $4,800,000 of ARPA funds for this project. Mr. Coyne asked a question concerning University of Scranton dormitory and university off-campus Council president asked, I asked on your behalf to address the situation. They said, please thank Mr. Coyne for his question and time and research. The administration would appreciate a 3-1-1 request that if Mr. Coyne feels comfortable doing so incorporates Mr. Coyne's research. That's the answer I got. Just some highlights of some things that have been going on in the city during the summer. The city continued to support the growth of small business by awarding $660,000 in Small Business Grant Recovery and Wage Boost Grants in July using funding from the American Rescue Plan. Throughout the summer, the city hosted 12 pop-up city halls with four more scheduled in September. Spurstenup Scranton Community Cleanup will be held in October and November. Scranton completed a successful swim season with three outdoor pools, one indoor pool and the Novembreno Splash Pad being open and available to residents. City opened application period for residents, Resident Childcare Assistance Scholarships and Childcare Served Providers. Wage Boost Grants using funding from the American Rescue Plan. Available funding totals $1 million for both residents and providers. The city is accepting requests for stormwater engineering proposals in Manuka, West Scranton, and North Scranton. The city is nearing the completion of three playground upgrades at Novembreno, North Scranton Mini Park, and Connors Park. City has completed surveying and citizen participation sessions for Naog Pool and will be looking to bring a proposal to council this fall. City has submitted the 2024 capital budget, which we heard about tonight. And early August, city hosted the mayor's Innovation Project Summer Meeting, which hosted 35 mayors from around the country and U.S. Senators Casey and Fetterman. And I had a chance to at least attend to those events while those mayors were in town. And that's all I have at this time.
5B for introduction and ordinance, amending file to council number 33, 2022, an ordinance as amended entitled, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2023, to and including December 31st, 2023, by adoption of the General City Operating Budget 2023 as amended, by transferring $50,000 from contingency account number, as noted, to operating expenditures Veterans Organizations Account Number, as noted.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'm going to start off with Mr. Voldenberg. Last week, I asked about that breadbasket NEPA. They were using community center funds. Did we ever get an answer on what community center they were operating out of?
I did not receive that. I'll follow up.
Thank you. Why I'm saying that is this budget transfer here is a transfer that's moving money over to cover a veterans organization. Council put these funds in a budget a year or two ago to help out with the Marine Corps League and other veterans groups. And I guess the money didn't get allocated to them. And this is a similar situation that's occurring with the community centers. The community centers were allocated money that they never received. Maybe some of them received pieces of it. But the funds sat around, and now they're being distributed as grants. I think at some point, Mr. Voldenberg, I did ask if we reach out to the administration to ask why these funds are being distributed as grants. So if we could just ask why these funds are being distributed as grants. It's a different process than I think was, I really don't understand the grant process. I understand we're trying to get records of what the money is used for, and I would think that would go without saying that these organizations should be able to account for all the money, every dollar, every cent. But why it's being passed out this way, I don't know, and it wasn't being passed out in a timely manner, and that's why we're making this transfer here.
I agree because, you know, from what I remember, they're line items. They're not grants. And now they're awarded as grants, and I don't know why. Maybe it looks better for someone, or someone else. But these are line items that were put into the budget that's supposed to be given to these organizations to survive, to keep these neighborhood centers open, Kaiser Valley, Trips. So, yeah, we need clarification because, you know, when you change the name of something, it's always, there's something there. So if you can find out how it went from a line item to a grant that has to be awarded every year and a bunch of hoops, my understanding, to jump through in paperwork that never existed before.
Yeah, and what I'm saying here is I'm not saying you shouldn't have to apply for it and account for it, but I don't know why it's being done in the manner that it's being done in.
On the question, is this different than the funding for the veterans organizations that you and I helped, some of the, like the American Legion and?
That funding that we did was in this year's budget.
So this is reoccurring funds?
Oh, gotcha, reoccurring.
This was money I, there were some improvements to the Marine Corps League. The money was originally put in to help out the Marine Corps League. It's reoccurring funds that are there for veterans organizations. That's why I say we should have to apply.
Sure.
Should say, I need a new handicap ramp for the back. I need a roof on my facility. And the same thing was done with community centers.
Sure.
And what I was saying with this breadbasket is it's a food bank, and it was community centers expenditures line item that was given out as a grant.
Oh, gotcha, right.
There were line items every year, then all of a sudden they became grants.
Gotcha. Well, let's try to get those answers. I'll vote for this tonight, but let's try to get some answers since it's in the fifth order.
I will as well. I mean, I don't, with this one, I don't disagree with where the money is going.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number, as noted, entitled, PMA HMGP Payable Assets, to receive grant payments from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number, as noted, entitled, PMA HMGP Payable Liability, to expend grant payments from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton, Department of Public Works, to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account, Monroe, for up to $250,000, to be used for the project to be known as the City of Scranton Rock Salt Facility.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of the underground miners to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $124,060 for the project to be known as Brooks Mine Restoration and Improvement Project, located at 1901 Mulberry Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, Naog Park. And authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the City of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant for up to $124,060.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'm going to make a motion to table this because I was at the Rec Authority meeting last Thursday evening, and nobody had any idea what this was for, nor did they discuss it with the Recreation Authority or anybody. So until they clear this with the Scranton Recreation Authority, I don't think we should move it.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion. It's been seconded to table item 5F. On the question.
On the question, with this item here, my fellow council member has some questions on the item. I'm going to support his questions. I'm going to get an answer. And I just want to make it stated that when I have some questions on some items that are on our agenda, that I get the same support.
On the question, I appreciate all that they've done already with the Brooks Mine and reading through this. It did sound like a great project proposal to add to those, to that restoration and to the Brooks Mine and what would be offered there. So I wasn't aware this was coming out of nowhere, so I think that's fine to table until we get further answers about this.
On the question, I will say, I like what they're doing there. I've been to it. My son loves it. I hope to see them probably get this grant money, but again, supporting a fellow councilman.
All those, all those in favor of tabling item 5F signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The item is tabled.
5G for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to release ownership of land formerly owned by Leo J. Rafferty to Pennsylvania American Water Company.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, this, I felt like there was a little more information to be had here if Mr. or Solicitor Gallagher could just take a look into it. I just, it didn't seem like there was a lot of information here.
I looked into it prior. I know the city obviously doesn't want to own any property. It says that. PA American Water acquired it through eminent domain. However, when you look up the docket, there's no such order granting that. And the order attached to this legislation is actually an order from Judge Nealon terminating the case. So I don't know if it was ever, if the PA American Water currently owns this through eminent domain. If they do, nothing was filed of record to indicate the same. So I probably wouldn't vote on this just yet until you get a full answer. Obviously, the city doesn't want any liability with the property. I understand that. But maybe if you want to pass it and then ask for more or just table it right now. But before you do a final vote, you need to get an answer on this.
I would be fine going either way. I don't mind getting it through as long as we get the information before final vote. Unless somebody would like to make a motion.
Before it's voted on, if it's not, if they didn't obtain it through eminent domain, then the whole legislation's got to be changed because it's inaccurate.
Attorney Gallagher, do you think it'd be possible for us to get an answer by next Tuesday?
Oh, yeah. I don't, I don't see why not. I'm sure the city, I'm sure the law office probably has.
Put the truth tonight pending an answer by next week from our solicitor. And if the answer isn't what we need, then we can table it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll even make an offer to table it next week if we don't get the information.
Yeah, I'll either call or put an email into legal tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Adam Joyce, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to the position of Treasurer for the City of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5I for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Joseph A. Ricardo Jr., Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Shade Tree Commission for an additional five-year term. Joseph A. Ricardo Jr.'s term begins upon execution of the resolution and will expire on December 31st, 2028.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Dimitri Bartel's Bray, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Board of the Shade Tree Commission. Dimitri Bartel's Bray's current term expires October 29th, 2023. Dimitri Bartel Bray's new five-year term will begin on October 30th, 2023, and will expire on October 29th, 2028.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5K for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of the Green Ridge Little League to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $83,000, to be used for the project to be known as the Green Ridge Little League Field and Facilities Revitalization Initiative.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5L for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of the United Neighborhood Community to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $100,000, to be used for the project to be known as United Neighborhood Community, Community Services Department renovation.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion item 5L be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file to council number 81, 2023, an ordinance, approving and accepting the City of Scranton capital budget for the year 2024 pursuant to Section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, we received a little bit more info tonight on the capital budget from the mayor, as well as some of the, I guess, financial data, data sheets. So I'll be taking a look at them. I mean, there are a couple of things that I have some questions about, and I'm going to take that information home and mull it around, and we'll still reserve my vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table 6A.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table item 6A. This ordinance is the 2024 capital budget, and it's being tabled until the public hearing can be held Tuesday, September 26th, 2023, at 5:45 PM. On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file to council number 82, 2023, an ordinance, amending the rental ordinance of 2022 to improve administration of said ordinance.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 282, 2023, accepting a donation from Amos Towers in the amount of $3,600 to the Scranton Fire Department to be placed in the Special Cities Service Account, as noted.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson of the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully.
I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 283, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept on behalf of the City of Scranton Fire Department a grant from Pennsylvania American Water Firefighting Support Grant up to $500.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson, for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 284, 2023, accepting a $100 donation from an anonymous donor to the Scranton Fire Department to be placed in account, SFD donation account as noted.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson, for Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 285, 2023, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton Fire Department to the Office of the State Fire Commissioner for up to $20,000, to be used towards the purchase of equipment for the Scranton Fire Department.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson, in the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 286, 2023, amending Resolution 240 of 2023 entitled, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Department of Community and Economic Development for up to $250,000, to be used towards the Davis Trail Rehabilitation Restoration Project, to reflect the name of the grant to include greenways, trails, and recreation grant program.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson, for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 287, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the City of Scranton to accept an award from the Federal Emergency Management Agencies, FEMA, fiscal year 2022 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Application, EMW 2022 FG 08673, in the amount of $70,227.27, after the City of Scranton's cost share of 10%, $7,022.73 is paid, to be utilized by the Scranton Fire Department to purchase and install an air cascade system at Fire Department Headquarters located at 518 Mulberry Street.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson, for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 288, 2023, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of Beth Shalom Academy to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $157,500 for the project to be known as Beth Shalom Academy Playground Project, located at 1025 Vine Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the City of Scranton, PA, to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant for up to $157,500 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation, the chairperson, for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 289, 2023, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of North Scranton Little League to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $99,750 for the project to be known as North Scranton Little League Batting Cages Project, located at 601 Theodore Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18508, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the City of Scranton, Pennsylvania, to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant for up to $99,750 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson, for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 290, 2023, ratifying and approving the city's application, acceptance, and administration of grant funds from the Safe Streets and Roads for all SS4A discretionary grant program through the Department of Transportation for up to $7,700,240, with $1,925,060 to be paid as a match from Capital City funding to be used for improving and enhancing pedestrian crossings and safety on Lackawanna Avenue.
What is the recommendation, the chairperson, for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
7J for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 291, 2023, ratifying and approving the city's application, acceptance, and administration of grant funds from the Department of Community and Economic Development, multimodal grant for the project named Lackawanna River Trail Bridge Design Only Project for up to $250,286.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson, for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I would like to thank the county grant writer for writing and getting this awarded to them and turning it over to the city.
On the question, I agree. That's great. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed to council number 64, 2023.
This ordinance has created overtime reporting requirements for all city departments' employees. Has been tabled until we receive additional information from the administration. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.